Norfolk Ladies Forest, don't you?
So that carried on recording, didn't it?
So we've started the recording again after that. A little bit of fun.
So you're in full flow Hazel.
Okay, right. My apologies. An apology if I'm talking fast into a habit. So, um, continuing the feedback. Right, so we've taken on board some comments that were made obviously at last meeting and wider about our newsletter. Um, the newsletter is currently being restructured. It is a very big job to try and get it all together. But what we're trying to look at is getting more information out about, obviously on its venues, but getting more information about Setford as well, in terms of what the teams across the town council are doing, as well as our events and things to show all the good things that are going on. That includes the Guildhall Tea Room, that will include any work the school's team have done, both across our centres and wider. So look out for that if you are subscribing to our tea room, not our tea room, sorry, to our newsletter. You should have had, um, uh, one a couple of weeks ago, which would have said at the top, keep an eye out, things are changing, it's gonna be.
So just ask a question.
Yep.
This newsletter, who is it from?
So the newsletter comes from, at the moment it's from the Carnegie.
Right, so it's not from the town council?
No, but it will, we are changing it around to make sure it's kind of covering bits and pieces and just making it a bit more of a wider view of all of our centres and it includes like the market, but we are looking at highlighting kind of, um.
So all the good stuff that Nick's team's doing?
Yeah, all the town council stuff as well.
You know, just walking down from the Carnegie to here, I mean, I saw a post on Facebook about all the lovely hanging baskets and the railing baskets. And I must admit, you know, I don't know what the guys put in their feed, but I'm having in some to my garden because they look absolutely beautiful. They were the kind of things that Hazel includes, so it would be a wider.
The reason I asked, and perhaps it's the wrong place to bring it up, but if you're following social media effectively at the moment, it, for a councillor, it really gets on my nerves because people do not understand the levels of the councils. And last year or the year before, we was all given little leaflets and it says, Town Council do this, Breckland does that. I don't know whether that can actually sit within the newsletter because I'm not sure.
So I've contacted someone at Breckland who had recently posted that on a social media post to someone I work quite, I work alongside sometimes. Um, and it's got the breakdown of what we are in charge of, what different levels of councils which covers Norfolk, Breckland and us.
That's right.
And I did speak to Katie about trying to get that onto the website, that's quite clear when you go to contact us as well.
Yeah, because I think that'd be nice if it was on Facebook and then we've got it, we sort of like save it and every time a dispute comes up within the town, we just click on that and we haven't got to bother and answer them, that's not our job.
Yes.
We've given them the.
As soon as he contacts me with that.
Or so.
We'll have to pass that on to everyone. And but yeah, it's just about highlighting because obviously we've kind of worked, there's been the Carnegie, there's been the Guildhall, there's been Setford Town Council and there's another market and everyone knows that's that group. But it's looking at highlighting what we are doing as a whole in, you know, all the good work that's going on, but also our events as well, because the events cross over between, they arena venues, but they are a council event or, you know, it's just, it's just making sure that everyone's aware of everything, but also advertising our events and trying to get the footfall into different areas and, you know, giving an update on the tea room and things like that as well. Um, but that's an ongoing process which will take a little while, but we're hoping to get it out by August, September time.
So just on that format, it's great that we're giving the message and we are the communications committee for the town council, so we want to say on some. However, somebody who wants to have a little late memoir of what the events are coming up, is that still gonna be that lovely, you know, 10 or 12?
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're looking at different formats. It's been an ongoing thing, isn't it? Um, and there are many ways you can do it. You can do it as an online booklet so that there's lots of different pages of different things. You can do it as the current format with, the current format works to click through for the ticket links, but I don't think in terms of adding extra information, it's going to work because you would just have to keep scrolling as if you follow it. Um, so yeah, it's just looking at the way we're structuring it and having it maybe in more of a booklet type format or something to that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in terms of the sharing, for somebody who's not a Setford resident, but is interested in coming to our venues to go and, you mentioned the comedy club, you know, has gone Craig Guns and that, somebody like that, they want to see quickly what the next.
Yeah, so whether, whether I structure it.
Scroll through a whole newsletter to get today.
Yeah, so that's something that obviously we'll take, you know, I'll take feedback on and I'll probably try a few options and we'll have a work, like talk to people about them, but maybe, um, trying to structure it so that your events are at the beginning and then you've got the other information later on. Again, it's, it's complete ongoing process, isn't it?
Yeah, that's worth, that's worth taking on that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did look at having two separate ones, but.
What we're worried about is, is people are looking, looking at that fairly boring format of just scrolling down and that it's not engaging enough. So we're looking at the turning page brochure type format, but, but actually it's worth, it's worth taking on that, on board that comment because if people only want to just say, well, what's the next event? Because that's what I'm interested in and it's up to them if they want to go through and look at all the nice stuff.
Yeah.
But there's, the format that we're looking at is, is within our budget, um, to facilitate, but also it gives us so many opportunities that if people look at an event, we, we can, you know, maximise a particular comedy club coming up, there's a real big headliner, there's, there's links in it there and then to go through to bookings and also click onto a video to, to see whether they really fancy the evening and things like that. It also gives you the opportunity to, let's take, um, Setford in Bloom, Chris, as an example, we could have done a feature on that and we could have heard, you know, a councillor actually tell someone a little bit more about it that a leaflet is never gonna do. Um, so again, I think this format might actually be another real good positive improvement in, in how we, how we go forward. So, and it's, it's at a reasonable cost, as I said, we can afford within our budget. So it looks as if we'll, hopefully, you know, we'll share again in September, but we want to really get it going in September.
Right, you're right.
I totally agree that we need a kind of an effective format which, which in effect markets what is on offer.
Yes.
But I do think we also need a format that allows people to quickly find the information, not being sold it, but being reminded what's told, that this event is on Friday, 17th to 7th in the Carnegie, a little of that. So you've got, in effect, you've got, for that, the boring, the boring, geez, the boring, but boring list, you've also got the sales pitch. I do think we need that.
Yeah, so one of the things we've looked at and me and David have spoken about is the option of, because obviously we've got this expanding website we're looking at and we're looking at the way the events and stuff are put on there, is looking at an option where you have kind of a quick brief on something and then they can click on it and it hyperlinks to our website where if they want more information, the information is there, but they don't necessarily have to read that full information, if that makes sense. It just, it's just giving us a chance to give a bit of feedback on our events as well because it'd be nice to kind of put out that this was successful and people enjoyed it. The next, you know, for example, the comedy club, the next one is this date. Um, but yeah, it's obviously an ongoing thing, but I will take those on board and keep them.
Can I just ask, I don't know whether this is possible because every, you know, we're not IT professionals. So I know sometimes I've looked at something on social media and then all of a sudden, because I've really studied what I'm looking at, all of a sudden they say, don't forget, this event is taking place on, and I'm thinking, all right, I didn't ask you to send me that. No, it's because I clicked on the link.
Yeah. Yeah, so we can set up reminders and things like that. It, it gets quite complicated because basically a lot of the links, if you like an event page on Facebook, you get reminders on Facebook.
Right.
Um, a lot of it is to do with Facebook algorithms, which I will go on to in a bit because we are looking into them. Um, and it will link similar events and things like that to your next issue you would have had a conversation about, I don't know, planting a tree in your garden, suddenly your Facebook page is full of lots of adverts for garden centres and things like that. And it's, it's about kind of, um, that's kind of the data behind, the data side of things behind Facebook and stuff like that. But yeah, we, we, so we're looking at making sure there is a structure where we can hyperlink. So that's kind of one of the issues we came up with. There's these great booklets and things, but you can't click on anything. And if you can't click on anything, it's not gonna work because we need to be able to click for people to click through to go straight to an event page to book for that event. Um, and like I say, every good information has to be clear in that. Um, it will still have the posters and things like that in it as well. Um, but like I say, it's a very big ongoing process, but it's just that we just, we just wanted to make your way, kind of looking at restructuring it and trying to get more into it so that it's more of a useful document rather than something that perhaps just kind of goes into people's junk when they don't look at it. Um, but yeah.
Now we're doing everything, seems like on Facebook, if there are other platforms out there.
Yeah, so we use Facebook, Twitter, currently we use Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, we have our Nextdoor account, I am, it's another type of social media thing. And we're obviously doing physical leaflets. We're hoping to get this newsletter to come through email rather than social media. And we've got a website as well and for each of our Facebook and Instagram, currently we have a page for each thing. So I'm currently working with, I think, 10 different social media platforms that I'm working with. Um, we are looking at other options in terms of, um, like parish council magazines and things like that, but it's just working with, making sure we're working within our area, if that makes sense, because you don't want to go too wide because people won't, they won't publish it, which is understandable. Um, and hopefully all the links with like newspapers and things like that, but it's obviously starting from there and having to build up to that. If you have ideas and things, we're more than welcome to have them passed on. Um, yeah.
Carry on Hazel, you've got a bit more to go.
Observations. Um, we've continued using our QR codes across our venues. Um, that was something Terry recently had said that he picked up on. Um, it's quite easy, quick and easy, you point your phone to it, you click it, it takes you straight to a website, on social media, anything like that. Um, so we're trying to use those to get people kind of on the fly, get a sign up to things. Um, this month we had our biggest comedy club to date, I don't know if anyone attended, but it was a really good success. Had great feedback from everyone attending. Um, we're working with the group running this as a regular event and using the footfall in the venue to distribute our flyers and leaflets, making sure that they're out and they're happy for us to have them on the bar. Um, lads that run it are good on social media, then it's they send us videos and things and they're tagging us in as much as we are as well. Um, they also do a loyalty card scheme, so when you book for their events, you get a loyalty card stamp, which means that you're encouraging repeat customers, even if it's just for that event, as soon as they're through our door, you know, you've got the posters up and everything else, hopefully that should increase our footfall. Um, and they were quite happy with the sales on that. Um, we've begun distribution of the hot flyers, so obviously off social media, um, with venue hiring details on the back. Um, my apologies, I've got to bring them, but they are really the incentive. Um, so what we've got is what, a three month overview, I can be there, the last time, and on the back of it, we've put, um, details on how to hire our venue. There's a QR code on that, you can scan for the newsletter as well, but it's just trying to get more people through the door. Um, and try and get some more regular hires and things like that. Um, and those are hopefully going to be going out to wider areas. Um, but we are waiting for a delivery of stands because we didn't want to just give them a packet of leaflets to be pushed aside. We're hoping to get some acrylic stands that they can stand in so that we can go to hotels, we can go to shops around town and wider areas and they can just pop them on side, put the leaflets in it and then they can just be picked up by people there. Um, Tom attended a meeting with some other local theatres recently, it was like a theatre group, and they were sharing ideas and mapping ideas for marketing and content sharing. He's kind of had some really good ideas, um, going forward, so we're hoping to implement some of them and I think that's an ongoing thing for popping out to do. Um, we've made our hire prices clearer. I don't know if you've seen the post on Facebook, if anyone is on it. It is pinned to the top of our social media page. Um, it could not be any clearer. It'll give you a breakdown of each day, um, so we've got different rates for certain days, but it's got rates for each day, it's got the rates for each, um, area and venue, and it's also got contact details on there for people to follow as well. Um, also advertises that we do concessions for some groups, which I think will help with getting some more regular hires in during the day. Um, we've recently hosted a afternoon tea event for a support group in the Guildhall. Um, that was all done by the Guildhall Tea Room Catering, I believe. Um, they absolutely loved the event, really enjoyed it. They are going to be regular hires of our venues. Um, they currently take our leaflets out and distribute them across a wide range of businesses, but they also cover Setford, Breckland, surrounding areas and I think, I believe, once and as far as down the market. So we are getting the leaflets out as far as we possibly can at the moment, um, which is good because, um, if you look into, we're going to in a minute, but if you look into our, um, Facebook analytics, you can actually see that we've got followers that are, you know, we've got worldwide followers for the Town Council, one for the Carnegie, but um, it's also getting more from local areas that perhaps might not do events in the same way that we do as well. Um, Guildhall projects, schools projects are gonna make great feedback on Facebook and things. Again, we're sharing the posts with the schools and tagging each other in. Um, they've been sharing some thank you posts, which we've shared widely and they're keen to do more things and happy for us to share things on social media, which is brilliant. Um, we've currently teamed up with Norwich Theatres, um, with their touring show Time and Tide Museum, oh, sorry, Time and Tide, the show. It's quite a big show. It's the first time Norwich Theatres have done something that is, um, a local show that they've then toured. They normally keep it within their, um, centres, so it's been really good to have that input from them on things. They're marketing it on their platforms and obviously we are marketing on ours, hopefully it sells as well at the Carnegie. Um, but we're hoping to keep that ongoing thing, ongoing communication going with them. Um, might pick up some tips on marketing with them. Um, we are posting regularly on social media about the different groups we have in the venue. Um, this is obviously gonna be an ongoing thing because we're trying to highlight that obviously you can hire it for a comedy club or for a disco or whatever you want to an evenings, but equally we have a lot of users within the centre during the day. So we have a lot of community groups, we have conferences, we have, I think we had three conferences across different rooms the other day. We have, um, like support groups and many different, um, types of people, can't think of the wording there, but hoping that will boost our daytime venue use a bit more. Going on social media data, apologies, this is quite long. So the number of followers we have is increasing steadily across our social media platforms. Um, our expected drop has happened on Facebook sadly, um, after our little viral posts from the Jubilee. Obviously we expected that to happen, there was highly unlikely we were gonna be able to keep a reach of over, I think it was over 100,000. Um, however, it is still averaging around the 20,000 mark for Town Council Facebook page and around 37,000 for Guildhall Carnegie page, which is still a very good reach, um, pretty much the town's population and then some. Um, we're looking at data, working with tools on meta business. Now, I don't know if anyone's got a business page on Facebook, but what happens is you get a full breakdown of all the analytics of everything. So I can click onto it and I can see at what time our users are logging onto Facebook. Um, it gives you a timeline of your day and it tells you at what point in the day they've logged on. It's quite interesting because we believed previously it was seven o'clock at night and it now appears between six and eight, no one is on our Facebook page. Not quite sure where it is, but, um, but that gives us a better, um, range of timelines and a better idea of when to post things because you're more likely to get interaction with people on it. Um, but it also means that, um, people are less likely to miss things because it's being posted as they're online and I can schedule posts to go up at that time, which I have been looking into this week and I believe there'll be a few going out in the evenings this week to catch that. And it also gives us feedback on, I haven't put on slides because obviously it's a bit of a conflict here, but, um, we can rate ourselves against local businesses. So what happens is it does it automatically, I don't put the businesses in at all, and it comes up with a list of 10 businesses within your area that are, they, Facebook considered are similar to you, and it tells you where you're rated in terms of social media followings and feedback and clicks and instant, and we're actually, the Guildhall page when I checked yesterday was Tea Room's, um, sixth, no, see Tea Room was fifth, Carnegie was, um, fourth and Setford Town House was third at that point. So obviously it goes up and down, as soon as someone clicks, it will adjust it, but it gives us a good gauge as to whether we're kind of doing it right in the area because the other pages are very successful pages and very well used. Um, so that's quite a good data to have. It obviously gives you your charts as well for reach. Um, again, tag, we're tagging the hires in the posts, I think I've repeated that a few times. Um, we're also tagging the three month overview, so when you have a full A4 sheet, I think it's got 12 different events on it, I tag every single event that has a Facebook page. So across those 12 pages, that's this instant spread of whatever their followers are. Um, and they, quite a few of them have been sharing them on their stories so that their followers instantly see that not just their event, but this is what we get with, this is what the Carnegie do, and there's been one that's particularly good tip, and they'll share it even when they've not got an event booked with us, they'll share it and say, look at the great things the Carnegie have, or the Guildhall and Town Council are doing. So that's good. Um, our Guildhall Tea Room page reach is lower. Um, at the moment it's about 1,370. Um, there has not been a lot of contact going up on that one, which is part of the issue because the problem we're having is, um, just trying to find time to do it, to be honest. But what we are looking at is, we're planning some planned campaigns for it, so there'll be kind of ongoing things across a week. Um, and trying to build that up a bit. The Instagram page has got an increase in followers, which is good. Um, but we are looking at ways to boost interaction with Tea Room pages. What we're looking at is, I did one the other week and it's things like, um, little polls on it, so on your Instagram page you can set two options and people click which one they think is the best. And what I did the other day was I put jam on top or cream on top for the scone. As you can imagine, that got quite a reaction, which is quite good, but we can do, you know, there's, there's plenty we can do. Um, it's quite a fun thing to do because people get a bit emotional about it, which is quite funny, but you can do things like which is our best cake and things like that. And going forwards, we will be looking at doing a lot more of that, hopefully with the new person on board. Um, we'll get more content out and making sure that boosts, but I'd say it's still a steady increase in followers, which is good. Um, and the Instagram page obviously started from zero last month, so it's nice to see. Uh, I'll do it for the page, yes, we've got 107 visits this month. Um, things up there, but we've got quite a lot of followers on that now, so it is, it is steadily, um, building. Okay, so we've got 61 followers on Instagram, 50 more in the last month, so 50 new people have followed us the last month, which is quite a good rating. Um, that's done, the QR codes and things, we're making sure that everything, all the links are fully displayed on the website and the newsletters, so everything is linking in. What we're trying to do is everything we put out everywhere will have a link to the next thing and just keep kind of that tag going on, um, everything we do, whether that's paper copies, whether that's in the centre. It's about pushing that branding out everywhere, um, so that it becomes a thing rather than just, you know, oh yeah, that's called Carnegie, it's a complete brand by itself, which is good. Um, we're also encouraging people to check in on social media. Don't know if you've done it yourselves, all you do, you turn up at an event, put a post on Facebook to say we're at this event and you hit the button, it says check in and it gives you your location on the map. Well, no, so personally, if my friends have put, um, they're at an event somewhere and I thought, oh, it's quite a good event, didn't know that was going on, where is it? And you look through and you, you know, you might be able to get yourselves down there before the event starts. If they check in as they walk through the door, you might actually get the last minute tickets. Basically it just gets on him out again and it gets out that we are doing lots of things.
I'm not at home.
Well, yeah, that's, there's two ways, it does tell people you're at home, but it also tells people that people are actually attending our events because it's all good and well, you know, I've sat here going, we're doing these great events and this many people turned up, but if you haven't seen any of your friends have done it, you might not do it. And there may be things that people tag. So for instance, I'm not particularly a fan of, I don't know, George Michael tribute acts, but there may be someone in my friend's group that is but won't talk up because no one else tags, well, if one of your friends tags it and you go, actually, if you like it and I like it, let's go together, let's book the next one together and things like that. So it just gets the conversations going and yeah, it's all about branding and newsletters this month.
Thanks, bud. So Brenda?
Yeah, it's just a quick one. Um, I had a friend die recently, it's not, you know, not a very good subject, but they didn't know that they could hold a funeral in the Guildhall. I know, and the only reason I know is Dave, before he went on holiday, he said, we've got a funeral in here today. Yep, not, not the what, the actual funeral's taking place in there. And well, yeah, we are going to use some communications, so how are we communicating it? Funeral parlors?
Yeah, so basically, um, this came about unfortunately because, um, my sister-in-law died reasonably recently and she wasn't religious by any means. And, um, I actually spoke to the family and said, look, this is something that, you know, we were possibly thinking about. The family had already engaged a particular funeral director in the town to conduct their funeral and they discussed with him about the opportunity to use the Guildhall for what we've classed as a simple funeral package, which is those people who are not particularly religious, don't want to go to a church, um, and actually don't really want to go even to the crematorium where she was cremated. Um, so they basically had a very simple family type service within the Guildhall. The coffin was brought in, um, everybody shared their, their, their views of, of her and, and, you know, her life as you do. Um, there was, it was quite relaxed, uh, you know, there has been feedback that, you know, it's a bit of a conveyor belt at some of these establishments, so, um, so it was nice and relaxed. We, we, so they said goodbye to the, uh, to the coffin that went off to the hearse and actually the immediate family did go over to the crematorium for a private, um, cremation sort of thing, but the rest of them then had a, um, a wake within the building. So it's something that we've spoken about with this particular funeral director, we've expressed that we cannot be an exclusive package with them and they're quite happy with it, but because we used it as a bit of a, um, a trial, it did work really well. We got some really good feedback, or I did, from, from family members and we've since conducted another one. Um, and it was quite an emotive one because this person was an employee of this particular funeral director, so it's really, really important to them that we, we did it in, in, in a really good way and we, we did. Um, and now they are fully on board and, but what I've said Brenda is, my staff and not, it's a very, it's a very specialist, um, area to work in and, you know, you're dealing with a very emotional people at the time. So, so we have got together a collective package that they will promote in the right way. Um, but we'll obviously deliver and conduct the elements that, that we'll do. And I think there's a real good package there. Um, and it's a good opportunity for us to utilise the facility. So as I said, you know, and it's always unfortunate because, you know, someone has died, but we've got another one in, um, next week, I think. Um, so it looks as if it's gonna be a regular thing.
We are looking at putting it on the website as well, but it was just.
But it, but everything will be conducted through, because we think that's the right way to manage it.
Yes, yeah, well, I mean, um, and I've seen everything, um, and there are a lot of people who are like, no, they're just, so I need to think about the future. But, um, what I'm, you have taken in all the other funeral directors and told them.
Well, basically it was a trial through my own personal family that he liked. Um, so we sort of hired the facility and did all, all the rest of it. Um, and then it was a case of this particular funeral, so it was a past employee. So they were sort of the trial things. We think we've got something that we can do really well and professionally between us, but the conversation has always been, as a council, you cannot be seen to be exclusive to one. So once we, once we're, and we're now at that point, we will, we will contact the others to say, but this is something that we do, is it something that you would like to do as well? If they say yes, then great, if they say no, and it's not gonna affect the other funeral director because he was under no illusions that this is how it's gonna be. But, um, but the good thing is they are very happy with the package and we will pursue it going forward with them, but it's, and it's now open to everybody else.
So, um, that, that's a funeral, but what about a wake?
So someone can use the facility just for a wake. I mean, you know, if, if they want, so for instance, if they want to use St Cuthbert's Church and then go off to the cemetery, you know, they can come back. And actually, we did have that example with another local family. And, uh, so we, so the actual hearse came in and they all met on the market square and then went to the cemetery, but they came back for the wake and they, they had the wake at the Guildhall and the Guildhall Tea Room afterwards. So, yeah, they, so we're put, and again, this turning page brochure will allow us to be a lot more professional in the way we marked it, so we can actually market, um, uh, weddings, christenings, baby showers and wakes, basically.
Yeah, that, I just think it needs to be in there.
And we've got a baby shower, we've got our second baby shower net, we've had a couple of christenings, uh, and we've also got a wedding on, um, Saturday. So, um, so hopefully, you know, we can start getting the information out and it can be a regular occurrence.
Yeah, so as long as all the funeral directors are aware, yeah, that you can offer a wake there, that seems to be first point of call with families anyway, so, you know, they can just drop that seed, if necessary. Well, I'm conscious that we've been doing a lot of things. Thank you very much for that, Hazel. Obviously, it's a very moving feast that you got there. And I know some of us are not too tech savvy, but appreciate the need for us to be up to speed with it all. So keep on the good work, keep us informed and try and take us with you. I don't think. So I'm going to move on there to, to the communication strategy, two O three twenty-two. David, I think you circulated this as the first draft.
Yeah.
Based on the feedback we had at a previous meeting, it was suggested we look at similar organisations. And I think you've used the similar organisation as a model to put this together. So what do you see as the next stage of this? To us to give you input over the next few weeks?
Yeah, so i- i- so if you've read, read the, read the document, I mean, you know, I think Terry suggested, don't reinvent the wheel. Do a bit of research, look at some of the other town councils. And that's what we did. And we sort of amalgamated some of the information. That's why there are examples of the, of the Maori poll, if you like, and things like that, that we plagiarised from another one. But it's all relevant. What we've done is we've looked at what we feel that we can do as, as our town council. So there are elements in there in terms of, you know, what we'll be doing with our website, what we'll be doing with social media. And, and also some of the other communication options which we were talking about earlier. So it's really, it's really, is this, is this the kind of thing that we want to go down? And then the next stage is to put a bit, bit more meat on the bones in terms of, okay, so we've got a strategy. It's a bit like, it's a bit like a vision statement for the marketplace. Okay, I have a vision, but then you've got to measure it by your actions and your outcomes. So, so again, you know, what, what makes our strategy successful? What do we have to do? So you've just heard, you know, a whole host of things in terms of Hazel's been doing, which is absolutely brilliant. But are there other areas that we can utilise this strategy to improve our communication? One of the things that was a little bit controversial, but gives us the opportunity with our new website, for example, is our new website will have a, it will have more detailed councillor pages. So it will have a mayoral page for obvious reasons and then it will have everything. Now, we do have that at the moment, but the website will be, allow us to have more information on people's individual councillor sites. So it might be, for, for instance, that collectively, we might want to do as Covid, one of the things that have come out of Covid is all these virtual meetings. Maybe you want to do periodic sort of virtual surgeries. So you're asking the public, you know, well, here's a topic that we're looking at. Marketplace might have been one several months ago. Let's have a question and answer and you can hub it via the website. That might be something you want to do in it. Or do you want to conduct on your website some virtual surgeries and record them? So people can see. Or do you want to profile what you do as a councillor in your ward on your page? So again, is a lot more positive stuff that we can do through our various platforms because we're improving them, which could be part of this community's communication strategy. It's really up to you guys as to what you want to put in it. So I think it's probably because again, unfortunately, I did, I didn't really circulate, because I was away on holiday. I didn't really circulate this until quite late in the day. So maybe it's something that we, unless people have got questions of this actual document now, maybe the next stage is when we meet again in September, everybody will digest it a bit more. We'll have a bit more update on websites and, and things like that, that we can put a little bit more meat on this.
Jenny, you want to come in?
Yeah, just to clarify, I haven't seen it. So for some reason, I'm having trouble, mine, I'm not on. No, no, it's the other way, not the new way. I can't get it. It's not on mine.
So I'll let you, I'll let you take a hard copy away, Jenny, yeah.
How many of them have you got?
I've got a couple here. Yeah.
I'm blowing one impossible. It's just that I'm not getting it.
She's not on change. She's been kicked out. She hasn't even got the little logo changed. Oh, but they call it that. Like an ethnic minority.
Well, I think just usually, when you do an abbreviation, you put it in full, the first usage of it and then everything. So it just needs to be, put it in the first usage.
Then use the jargon.
Yeah.
All right. Probably my fat finger typing again, Chris. You've shown inclusivity. You're showing, because it talks about how the council's communication strategy should be totally inclusive. So you have to make sure that we, we, what we do is we try and make it totally inclusive for everyone. I mean, there was a section in here which also talked about the website. And one of the comments, when we shared it within our offices, was how are we going to do that? And it was talking about, it was talking about the language aspect. You know, how are we going to, you know, someone doesn't speak very good English? How are we going to make our website? Well, it's quite easy in terms of some of the technology now that you can just press a button and you will, yeah. So, but we need to make sure that when we're talking to our web designers that they understand that. Some people have trouble with, with, I know there's a couple of members of staff that have got black screens and things like that. So we just have to make sure, as part of the communication strategy, as we develop our various different platforms, the brief that we give them, make sure that we are totally inclusive.
So I think, you know, as a strategy, it's a good start. We ought to input, give some feedback, such as you've done, Chris. But I think if we can email that through to David over the next month, so that that can be incorporated. So that we're ready as a committee to adopt this come September, which you'll still have to then go to full council at the end of the month. But if everybody's got the chance to input into it, that revised document, and I think it's something that we probably need to review annually.
Yep.
Because technology changes. You've got some, you know, some visions and priorities there, which, you know, there's one there, digital monitors, installation. Well, we know last night at planning, we talked about digital monitors being part of the group. So things will be changing. So I think an annual review of it by this committee would be something we ought to do.
And actually, those monitors that you, you were talking about, actually, part of the deal is that town councils get ten percent of the input. So, so again, that's something that we should adopt in here. We're also, I've also been talking to BFVR that's talking about something called InfoPoint, which again, because if people don't really have good wifi connections and things like, you don't need it. You just go up to this thing, just point your phone to it, click it and it downloads some information and that's it. So again, we, hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll have one of those on the marketplace.
Brenda and Dennis.
Is it, is that, is it legal that we have to have that word in B M A? Or why can't we just say to include young people and all national, and all nationalities rather than, because some people take offence because everything keeps going up, B M A, B M A. I'm just wondering whether it's just, we just say all nationalities or is that the thing that, yes, that?
I don't know, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't, I'd have to say.
Because to me, it's just all nationalities, isn't it? We're all equal and one.
Yeah, it's clear because it was all members of, you know, community or something like that. But Dennis, you want to come in?
Yeah, on, on the, the, I think you should win, but I forgot what I was coming.
But just going back to that, Brenda, I think if you don't do it, you're going to get criticised for not making reference to it if you do do it. So I think.
To me, all nationalities means the same thing, but some people, there's a, God, there's that word again. For me, I don't care either way, but, you know.
No. But I think when it's, because something like the deaf, then there's, there is a need to provide a different media for communication. But also you've got foreign audiences who've come along. Not necessarily on what colour or what ethnicity they are. They may not speak. And we may want to encourage, you know, visitors from afar, come in here, look at the seats we've had over the weekend. You want to be able to communicate with them and not everybody in the seat community is English as their first language. So I think there's a few points there we can probably just try and get a bit more of a a way, middle ground, I think is probably the.
If, if members want to have a little read of this and I will give you all hard copies as well. I've got a few more here, Karen as well, so I'm sure we've got enough, yeah. Yeah, and so if we can use sort of August, have a really good thing about it and share it, then come September, we can.
Look to the doctor, yeah.
Sure, I remembered what I wanted.
Dennis.
Thank you. The ten percent we get on those viewing things for the councils, is that for all three council layers or?
No, it's the town council.
It's as a town council. Great, thank you.
I wish you'd had more of that information from the other two.
Right, okay, well, so part of that one then, two O four twenty-two, Marketplace Working Group, which includes the specialist markets and the weekly markets.
So specialist markets, when, when I say specialist markets, we've sort of widened that to include people who are not the weekly, but they're not just the civic specialist markets, although we have got one coming up as part of the Heritage Festival, which is Markets of the Future on the ninth of September. But it's also trying to get, or encourage traders to come on non-weekly market days of Tuesdays and Saturdays. So as I said earlier, you know, we've got some good stall inquiries coming. So hopefully, we can improve a few more to, to be on the marketplace. In terms of the weekly markets, so so I hope we all understand now that the weekly markets are protected within the reconfiguration of the marketplace closure, car park closure. Over the last month, we've had those discussions with the various tenants. There, I've talked to some of the stall holders or one stall holder particularly yesterday because there was a little bit of Facebook chatter, again, while I was on holiday, from one of our Shambles tenants, who showed some concern about, but it emanated from a little bit of market gossip in terms of, no, actually, it's going to cover the whole market. So they were a little bit concerned about being outside their shop front. So, so I've actually gone in there and, and we've said to that particular tenant, look, at the end of the day, you get your official information from us. Just take whatever is said as a pinch of salt, ask us before you, you know, jump to any conclusions. I think from her point of view, she's now quite happy seeing where they are in terms of the red line. And as, and as I said today, it looked pretty vibrant out there. It just needs a bit more activity, which brings us to, school holidays are imminent. And during those school holidays, the heritage and events team will be doing various different arts and craft days. We've purchased some traditional games, skittles and tin can alley and things like that. We also take out a puppet show to school, so we might be doing a little puppet show out on the marketplace as well. And then we've got the upcoming events, such as Creative Carnival, which is on the twelfth to fourteenth of August. So there will be activity in and around the market square and the Guildhall. Then on Sunday, the twenty-eighth of August, we've got a family event on the market square. So it will be music and food and things like that. So again, it will, it'll be a nice family chill out afternoon. Then we've got the Heritage Festival, which is between the ninth and the eighteenth of September. The first weekend, as I said, is the Markets of the Future. The second weekend is a steampunk weekend, which will be over two days, the seventeenth and the eighteenth. And from my catch-up meeting on Monday with the team that is growing into some really substantial event with some, with some big, big sort of steampunk community type.
What is that?
Basically, it's, it's a bit, it's, well.
Every rock, is it or something?
Well, it's a bit, it's a mix between sort of a, yeah, it's very based in the Victorian, it's sort of like got a bit of a Goth element there. But it, it can be fun and there's a lot of followers. And with some of the contacts that have been established, there is going to be a lot of people that come and like this kind of stuff. Some of the other towns and cities around the country turn this into usually really, really big events. This is our first stab at it. But already there are people that are coming down that are specialist stall holders, specialist entertainers, specialist organisers that will bring following. I know in the past, Dad's Army have developed events that are sort of nineteen forties themed. And there are followers that, that go week in, week out to these kind of events. And it seems like we're, we're touching base with groups that will hopefully come to Thetford on, on those two days. So that's really good. We had a really positive meeting this morning with Chiltern's and we are going to resurrect after Covid our annual partner meeting of Macmillan Coffee Morning. And before Covid struck, we, we talked about how do we expand the very successful event that we did on, in two thousand and nineteen? We were going to take it on to the market square. The market square wasn't, it was a car park then, so we, we've got, so actually, we're going to base it around the market square and Guildhall. But we've also blocked out the Carnegie during the morning and early afternoon, just in case weather doesn't permit. So that's on the thirtieth of September. We'll be having a Halloween weekend from the twenty-nine, thirtieth and thirty-first of October. And then Christmas weekend on the second to the fourth of December. And again, Christmas, we are hopefully looking to expand across more of the sites, not just the marketplace around the town centre. So we will bring Santa in via the River again. But we're talking to the Light Cinema and again, Chiltern's to do a lot more stuff on the, on the green. And the theme of Christmas this year will be Christmas movies, Christmas films. So there'll be various different points celebrating, you know, important elements of Christmas films, so like the Polar Express and Miracle on Thirty Fourth Street and all that kind of stuff.
Maybe.
Yeah, well, oh yeah, I don't know. But so, so, so there's a little bit of activity that we've started to plan on the marketplace. But again, that'll be very fluid and we'll improve as we go along. We have, funny enough, on Mike's annual town meeting, we had some feedback from various different groups that made presentations that night. And I did make an offer on the night to the organisers of Dublin Ministries that were talking about all the good work that they do for people who are sort of moving into new homes and they haven't, they haven't got the means, the resources for furniture. They have now set up a wider group that, that run food banks and things like that. And I did offer them a sort of an awareness day on the marketplace at that time. They've come back to me, they're very interested. We're just trying to work out a date that will be preferential for them. So again, we can have a bigger awareness day on the market. And the thing is, they're not just going to, you know, they're not just going to talk about all the good work they're going to do. They're actually going to do some activity on each stall as well. So hopefully, we can attract lots of people and inform them of all the good stuff that's going on around the town. So that's where we are at the moment. But just going back to what I mentioned earlier, and there's a couple, a couple of conversations that keep sort of, you know, rearing up is, is terms of vision. And I thought, well, you know, we've had three working groups. The first working group was to create that vision and decide what we were going to bring back to the committee and full council about what we wanted. The second group was when it was decided to have the consultation. The second working group was to organise and facilitate that consultation. And then the third working group was to do what we're doing currently. And that's actually to implement some of the changes. But it's, you know, again, it, it's questioned what, what has been the vision? Well, Stuart's vision, which was presented through Working Group One, was talking about things like to provide a dedicated pedestrian, well, actually, old handies help rather than, you know, but to, to provide a dedicated pedestrian area, giving unobstructed views of the Guildhall and allow safe and traffic through the environment. That's why we closed down the car park. This will allow a more pleasant experience for users to sit and take in the heritage as well as allowing improved access to businesses, buildings fronting. Now, if you talk of those two, some of the, well, at least two of the Shambles tenants, they will tell you that not having a cars in front of their business has improved it. It has given them the opportunity to make, so we have done that. It also talks about how the area will still be available for Tuesday and Saturday markets and things like the annual service of remembrance and further celebratory events. Well, we're, we're going to be able to do that and we're going to be able to facilitate those in a better way. Improvements to the streetscape that would be more appropriate service for the area. Now, we are currently, I think Thursday or Friday of this week, we will have our final submission of our phase one Heritage Master Plan. And that will hopefully get us to a point where we can resurface that, we can talk about. But we've started with the planters. We are now talking to Breckna Diddon. we've started with the planters. We are now talking to Breckford District Council about maybe improving our war memorial area and bringing up the other plaques of the Czech Airman and Polish Airman, the USA. So again, improving that area, greening up the space even more. But a vision is something where we want to get to. And I think with respect to Stuart, because he loves words. It's it's half a page here, but but it actually tells us where we want to be. Now, our job is now as working group three is to take out this and create the actions, implement the actions and report back the benefits or the outcomes. And that's what I'm doing at the moment. So if anybody's interested, I can circulate a list of what we've done so far and a couple of the things that we're looking to do. One of my top, top, top priorities. And again, I will apologize that we're, you know, but I am pushing hard for the contractor to give me a start date. One of the things is going to make the next step phase improvements, that market square is that electric feeder pillar. Chris sent me an email, Chris sent me a photo of a couple of traders that are vying for a very small space. And the reason they're doing that at the moment is because that's the only option for electricity. But once we get the electric points on the other side, Sharon, for instance, the fishmonger, is desperate to go over there because her front of her will won't be in the sun. So she's desperate to go over there. And we've talked to the other traders and and they know she's going over there. So it's it's absolutely vital. I get the finger out and get the contractor's fingers out and get that in because that's going to make one hell of a difference. So again, that's on our our actionable list of that needs to be done.
What's the holdup in then?
That's a whole, well, I know the holdup is because we then had to go back because it was such a long period of time because we then had to then go through consultation again. All your original quotes were out of date. We went out and then and then the trouble is, in some respects, Covid was lifted. And suddenly contractors are inundated with work. And and it's now trying to pin them down and they're saying, oh, right, we've got to re-quote, but actually, you know, but but I'm really pushing them now to try and get get it in because, you know, we need, I mean, whereas I needed my planters in at least for Jubilee, I need I need those electric points in for things like, you know, Christmas light switch on and things like that, you know, so we need to get it in. Hopefully, it's going to be in within six weeks, he's saying. So that's going to make one hell of a difference. But then, you know, we then need to to look at and there's a health and safety risk in heaving out those bloody bollards every time. And again, we might well be able to look at some ornamental gates. It doesn't, it's not intrusive to the market square, so rather than be really high, they're sort of low. But again, they can have a nice heritage decal on it. We were talking about solar powered street light and also another arch into the Guildhall building with market and whenever the market was moved from the old market street up to it. So may, so again, improving our heritage and which is all part of of the vision. So the vision is is something which we want to aspire to. It is fairly fluid. And it is going to take time. It's not something necessarily you know and will achieve in one piece of paper. So I I do think it's a bit unfair when people say I've not been sold a vision. The vision might change. Who knows? But the vision actually, in, you know, again, with respect to Stuart, did set out, it was a pedestrianized area. It was something that was going to improve business on the market square for for those tenants. It was going to be green in the area. It had it every, it had everything in there and that's what we're trying to to do. But but bear with us, it's not going to happen overnight. These are big things that are going to happen.
In essence, you've covered most of these already.
Well, um.
It's just that.
But.
Bringing more out of, because, you know, all this is already being done. It's been done. It's there, right? It's just now you're highlighting more within that. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
We've got the two rooms, we've got extra people on the marketplace, we've improved the streetscape with all the.
But there's a biggie in there.
Stop there, but it's not because that's not.
You want to continually improve.
Yeah. And that, and so a vision is just what you.
And also, there's a big, there is a biggie in there and the biggie, biggie is the is the surface.
Yeah.
You're never going to resurface that overnight. You know, that's going to take a bid. It's going to take, you know, it's it's a process that has to go through. So I think actually, you know, we've made some good inroads because look, you know, a nice day, weather always helps, but going out there today. You know, it was a it was a really nice atmosphere, to be fair.
So I don't know whether this is the right place, but we're talking about more specific. So we talked about the electric box.
Yeah.
Things like the Guildhall above the doorway, given that, you know, things like that. I know they're small elements, but you know, like we met with the artist about possibly doing the Norse crosses on the area outside the steps, so he'd give something there. So there's little bits and pieces that are ticking along, but.
Again, to be fair to you, Stuart, along with this, and I just wanted to share this today, but along with this, Stuart also did very much that. He did a piece of work. He he also submitted a table with some of those actionables that we need to. So what I'm doing is I'm adding a few because again, it was November twenty twenty one and we've had more ideas. So I'm updating that, but I'm also, you know, highlighting the fact that we've completed some of them. So again, if you just give me until sort of the end of the week, what I'll do is I'll I'll populate that a little bit more and then send it round the committee. So it's good information that you've got. But yeah, there's some good stuff that's coming out of.
Can I ask a question then, Dave? If what we do, what venues do on the marketplace and the Guildhall.
Yeah.
That comes out of our budget.
Yeah.
So if we want more money, we'd have to go back to the council. So just for example, around the 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 portico.
Of the entrance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And we want Guildhall.
Yeah.
Written in gold.
Yeah.
Right? That that comes out of our budget.
Yeah.
So each time is when we look at something, we've then got to go back, have we planned this for next year?
Yeah.
And we need to, we need to look at this.
But there may be some elements. I don't quite know how the heritage bid money's looking or whether that assigned to the Guildhall could come out of something like that.
It could. And I mean, and actually, you know, the second big bid will take in the resurfacing and things like that. But we might be able to get some some money out of that first phase bid, which is, which hopefully is a couple of hundred thousand pounds, you know. A lot of that is to is to facilitate the process of putting together the big bid. But there is some elements of money that we can do some quick wins to show that there's a need for the bigger bid. So I'm sure we can do that. And also, one of the things that, you know, we need to get a bit cuter of is if we are successful with our finances, don't wait until March. You know, if we generated some income, let's spend it on doing these things because come March, if we if we dilly and dally, then
They take it away from this.
You've lost it. But we've got to be successful to be able to do that, but.
We've got that.
Yeah, and we have that, and I have.
The money.
So the other thing that you mentioned about the of the Bank Holiday Weekend, having a bit of music down there.
Twenty eight.
Is there any chance of you're in the best time of the year now, weather wise, like having the odd singer just on the the shambles bit there on on a one off evening event?
We can, although I must admit. So I've come back and said to Tom and Katie, can we set up a couple of weatherproof speakers, which are reasonably, you know, and put them sort of so they're beaten, so they're not in eyesight on that flat roof of the Guildhall, which we can link through into the chair store that even if it's just background music, not particularly loud, but on a day like this, when everybody's out there, just a little bit of background music floating through the air, where we can go in there and go, there's five hours worth of music, pop, done. Don't have to think about it. Because, you know, you always see these things when you go on holiday and, you know, you just, you know, I was sitting in a in a bottom arena and I, you know, and I I'm terrible. My wife will tell you that I'm a bit of a fidget. I can't stay there. I mean, I'll drink a coffee in two minutes and say, right, you've finished, let's move. We sat there for two hours because it was just so nice just to chill out and it was just nice music and nice environment and all the rest of it. And we just need to create that because sometimes, you know, you don't have to spend three hundred pounds to get a few singers in. That will do. And if people's got in the right mood, you know, they'll, they'll enjoy it.
But that's what we said about the Guildhall tea rooms. No, no, you can't have music. You do because it's just nice in the background.
Yeah.
It's blurring at you, but you can hear it.
No. So I think I think we will do that as well, but there will be other times that we that we will get, you know, as we used to do with the night markets, you know, something very small budget. We've got the budget. We've allocated some budget of the town, Heritage and Town Events budget for market square activities, so.
Okay, right. Well, I think we'll move then to compliments and complaints, two oh five twenty two.
So it's nothing that's gone through either way to the the councillor, apart from she did receive a nice email from Norwich Road Residents Association to apologize in in it's taken so long to come through and I, you know, I don't want to start World War Three on on social media again, but actually, they were quite complimentary about the Jubilee. More importantly, you know, how we turned around a bad situation on the Sunday and got the people into the into the Carnegie and they enjoyed the the entertainment. So that was quite nice. But apart from that, nothing really.
It's not a really complaint, but it's just an observation in terms of the comedy club that did attend. It's very busy. I don't know whether we were caught off guard by how busy it was because the bar.
But the bar was very. So so one of the things that, I mean, to be honest, you would expect a a large audience like that to generate a reasonable bar income. So there was, I was on holiday and it came through and I thought, oh, blimey, that's good. Well done, guys. And then there was a couple of comments that said that there was a couple of issues with the bar and stuff like that. So anyway, on my return, we had the catch-up meeting. And you are always going to get caught if you're not careful when you have a format where it's just intervals. Because you have a mass of people going a short space of time. Unfortunately, talking to Hazel, who actually attended as a as a member of the public, so she gave me some good feedback from her perspective. And basically, what we didn't do is we didn't create two lines to the bar. We only, you only got to the bar and then realised there was probably two work service stations. I'm not sure whether you could agree with that.
Yeah.
So I think what we need to do is to make sure that they're communicated by some front of house staff. And we need to have this, and I've talked to them about it before, though, that those little barriers, just to come out two foot in between the two work stations. So people realise they can go either here or there. But also push the pre the pre-interval bookings because again, that's going to take some pressure off you. So so I do, I would suggest that we were probably a little bit caught caught cold. I mean, that was a big attendance in terms of something like that. But it's not something we haven't coped with before because the pantomime has full out, you know, sell out audiences. So we've dealt with two eighty, three hundred before. But we just need to be a little bit more on it on on that.
So I think, yeah, the interval pre-ordering to get the staff to say, would you like?
Would you like to order?
Thing there would be great. I don't, the the two lines thing, I think you're still going to serve the people's quick because the people in the line were going outside.
Yeah.
Makes it look less grand, intrudes less into the.
Well, and and that's what Hazel was saying, because they didn't realise that to the end, you had one single line that just went, you know, I mean, you know. And also, although we weren't in charge of the front of house bit, we should have had someone there to do our bit. And I think this is something we will suggest to the players in terms of the pantomime, that once they've gone through the ticket bit, that we actually then take over and talk, not the ushers bit, but we'll take over and talk about, you can drink, you can take your drink into the auditorium because people don't understand that sometimes. But also, they they were quite off guard in terms of, you know, servicing the the tickets as they came in. To my mind, you know, if it's unreserved tickets and they've got something, you don't have to look at a sheet, you just take it. Yeah, in you go. So it could have been quicker, but I think it's all part, we're talking to another agency that have been doing some of the tributes. I mean, the George Michael and things like that. Again, we need to have a lot more communication with those with those third party agencies because they don't know our venue. We need to work with them to maximise our bit.
So just bearing in mind your earlier comment about December being rammed.
Yeah.
The ability to get more sessional staff, is that something we're trying?
We are. We have been, we've been trialling a couple of sessional staff and and the feedback is that, you know, they've been pretty good. They've not been under that kind of pressure, but, you know, you have to start somewhere. There are a couple of people who have applied for the tea room job who may not necessarily be right for that, but it looks as if they've got the experience and we are, we are getting busier. So again, in the past, our downfall has been, you know, you might be able to offer them one party every couple of three weeks. Now, you know, you can offer them seven hours, fourteen hours every week because we've got those kind of events. So I think we, you know, we can go back to some of these and ask them, okay, you've not been successful with your interview for this particular job, but would you like to be signing up as a session?
Very good, sir.
Yeah, I think we spoke earlier about the tea rooms and monitoring the tea rooms. And I do find that that is quite a good idea because yesterday we was in the tea room, but we actually as half inside and half outside, that makes sense. So we took our to finish off outside. And a gentleman come up and he said, is it all right if I sit at these tables? So I said, yeah, I said, what was it you wanted? He said, well, I'm hoping the lady's going to come out and get. So I just went in and got baby. And I was thinking, if that turns out to be successful, that people are going to sit at your tables, she's going to get inundated in, so because she's been in, out, in, out. So what I'm saying, on certain days, you might need one and a half people.
Yeah, but this, but 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 this is why. This is why it's very, it's very important that we get the kind of feedback from you guys and the wider public. Sometimes, you know, if you're under a bit of stress, you know, you get a bit defensive at times. But but to be honest, as as we say in the team, you know, let the criticism come from the team rather than the members of public. So let's let's actually be really critical of ourselves. And actually, one of the things that came up on Monday is how do people know when they go into the tea room and more importantly, sit outside? Do they wait? Do they go to the counter? Do you have to pay first and then? So the process is you come in, but it doesn't say. Now, Babe has put the little menus on the tables, but there's no information to say, please make your order at the counter. So place your order, you can go back with your tea and coffee, but if you've ordered a sandwich, the sandwich will be served to your table because it's going to take a few minutes to sort out. But you're right, Brenda, we need to, but sometimes you are too close to it, sometimes to know all the things. So we do value that.
You can't, we couldn't fault Babe. I went in there, I said, is it, an old man, it's a bit, it's a journey for him to come up that slow.
Yeah.
He wasn't very good at walking and he was waiting for a lift, so he thought he'd sit here and wait, have a cup of tea and a piece of cake. No, he had a scone in the end, didn't he? But so I just went into Babe, I said, I don't know if you can serve this man because he's, you know.
Hopefully, if we get some decent sort of friends of the town council or whatever we're going to call it, you know, some of those might want to come in every now and again and and help out with just that bit. Because you don't have to be particularly skilled at anything to to do that in terms of have your have your food, all this kind of stuff. But what we've also said, because I'm very, I'm very concerned about how busy it's getting in there and then there's times when I know when I was on holiday, Katie jumped in for a couple of hours because.
There's days.
And that is, and and I've said to Babe, that you need, but there needs to be communication and so whether we get a buzzer or something like that, if she needs some help and then one of us will go over and we can do that front desk bit, that front bar bit.
Jenny, then, then.
I was just going to say that gentleman was actually a visitor to the town, was outside just here to get. Again, same, Babe was that visit this morning when we went in there. Town park was there and Katie was there.
Look, I'm just saying, yeah, I I do think we're going to have to have some way of relieving her from pressure because I mean, she's up there trying to make all the food up and everything and then trying to rush down and serve it. It it's getting busy enough, so you have to. And so we need, and she will try to do everything herself and will not ask for help. So we need duty of care, we need to make sure there is an option for. The other thing is there are times when you give feedback to people and times when you shouldn't. When somebody is rushed off their feet and everything, you you shouldn't try to give feedback to them. I've done that to you, David, so I understand. And 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 I've learned that, you know, weight return and you can give better feedback to people if you do it at the appropriate time.
Right, Hazel.
Just a quick one on that one. If you do notice anything like that, if you email it in, you should all have my email, but if not, you've got the mail one. If you email it in, I'm at my computer between those times unless I'm obviously in a meeting. If you email it in, I'm at my computer between those times unless I'm obviously in a meeting, but it does get picked up. So we can, we can kind of keep that banked and just pick it up on our morning meetings and stuff like that.
A buzzer or some of her hers.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
And get it through to her. We know she's a lucky person and she does a good work, but we want to serve her.
Absolutely, yeah.
So just on, I apologize, I've been about last week, so, but we've got the tables outside on there. Do we have menus there or is it something we need to get awaited?
Is there not menus on the outside? There has been menus on the outside table.
You probably have awaited things, I don't know why, and also like place order inside or something like that, not on there.
There is a big menu on the board out the front.
But we have, I mean, if nothing else, because what if you have those ones that stick in the thingy, it takes up space, they're not particularly big spaces, but the one, we have sort of table clips, if you like, so we can, you know, we can just clip it to it. So people can have a look and then just put it back so it doesn't get blown away or whatever. Um. So we we um, yeah, we yeah, we welcome the feedback, but we we are, some of those points we have discussed and we are trying to put it right, but again, you know.
Helping on a Saturday.
But that's because Saturday's always been our better day, but but honestly, there is, there is, you're looking at it now and you can't predict which is going to be your best day. There's times when you go, well, actually Wednesday, but when you're looking at it now, it's like Wednesday's not particularly good maybe, but it's not too bad as it used to be. The thing is, what we might do though, um Dennis, is we might start looking at, is there a key time? Because at ten o'clock, it might, you get someone in from ten o'clock, you might want to need, you might need them, say, from twelve o'clock to one thirty, you know.
Just put Jenny, you ought to come in.
Yeah, it's just a quick one is just maybe get help with chairs.
She does, she does, and we and we we always go and fill up the, we, you know, we fill up the urn, for instance, for uh and things like that. We don't, you know.
We know, just like wondering because sometimes you get sort of three or four tables out and then today.
But the one thing I don't want it to do is to rush around because there is three steps from that kitchenette down to there and, you know.
Right, on the part of that there, two oh six twenty two, community engagements, anything we want to put out there?
Well, we're going to, we are going to put out the um the thing that we talked about earlier, which was the event feedback uh information. So we will get that out. Um. Again, called, I'll I'll just send that round and just share that with you before I do so. But apart from that, I think we're all good.
So then, really off this update, I suspect you probably haven't got too much.
I I I haven't got, I haven't got, I haven't really got anything to say what should have been on the agenda. It's more to be on the next agenda. Because uh part of the terms of reference to the committee is we have two things that we have to do annually. So we're going to bring back the communication strategy in September. Already, we've talked about that. We will start the um the first phase uh budget process in September. But we annually, we do have to review the market fees and the venue hire fees. Now, the venue hire fees, um I'm looking to try and put a proposal together for September. I mean, we sit here every year and we always look and say, is this the right time to put our fees up because of what's going on? At this moment in time, I think it's probably actually the worst time ever to to even contemplate putting them up because everything is going up. So what I think we need to do is, but we are getting busier with things like tribute bands and things like that. Now, there are elements, there is a cost to the venue to us that really I feel should be shared with the with the band. And the big thing is our licensing. Now, if you look to our budget, our licensing's gone up because our our PR PRS commitment is based on, even though there's a discrepancy in there, and I think Alan puts it in his in his comments, their PRS charged us uh quite a lot of money when they 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 couldn't because we didn't have anything. It's sort of stretched back to sort of, you know, because coming out of Covid. They've realized that now, so we're going to get a refund, so that will come down. But even so, it's rel, it's relative to um to attendance and and all that kind of stuff. So I I was talking to Katie because Katie's worked in various different theatres. And I think even if we made some kind of concession that if you were going to have a sold out venue, then you're going to have to pay a fifty pound extra charge because they're going to get a phenomenal amount of income. You know, if you've got two hundred and fifty people buying a fifteen pound ticket, why should we be paying seventy five quid for PRS? So I think there should be like a sort of a um up to a hundred people, you pay this, between a hundred and uh sold out, you pay this. And I think I can't, you know, they they used to pay it, but then all the bands were not paying PRS. So what they did is they changed the rules and put the onus on the venue. But if we don't pay PRS, we can get closed down. They closed down a big venue in Norwich once. Um. So I think we have to do it, but I think, you know, that's just, that could be a significant cost to us.
Yeah.
So I think we should be looking at something like that. We should also be looking at, um, again, Tom's been talking to other theatres and things. They can't believe that we don't charge a sound and tech fee if they expect us to do it. So again, it might only be a nominal charge, but it will be something else that we that we charge. So for the bog standard people who want to come in and hire our venue for a fiftieth anniversary, which doesn't qualify for PRS and things like that, then um it's not going to change. But for those people who have been successful on the back of our venue, then I think we should have these additional charges. Similarly, with the market fees, I've spoken to the market traders and said, I'm going to look and review the market traders uh the way we do our fees. As uh we've spoken about for a couple of years and we've never ever done it, which is a grid system. So there will be very small dots on the on the surface, very discreetly. But for the market supervisor, you, they'll be working in three meter grids. So this is what I was saying to you earlier, we'll cover it. The the trader that you talked about, um he, you know, he will take liberties. And he will say, it's because it's empty, David, I'm just trying to make it look vibrant. Well, on Tuesday, I walked out there and said, you know what, you should be paying twice your fee for that. So I said, and I did warn him, I said, but I'm going to be proposing to the committee. It's within their remit to do it. They might overrule my proposal. But if it comes through, um and he said, well, I'll go back to the right rate. Uh. And I said, well, that's fine because we're hopefully going to need that space, if not for activity for other traders. So I think what we need to do is to look at it. And and I did pace out Mandy's stall, who was right next to him. And actually, you know, with the new system, she was pretty much bang on the mark of what she pays. So I I think there'll be winners and losers, but hopefully the losers will have to, you know, come back into into the fold and either pay more or pay less. There are also, um, we also have to be a bit stricter. If they want electricity, they pay for it. Some of these other traders that were now like roasties and people like that, they're paying for their electricity, so it's unfair that the weekly mark. And I've spoken to the two who really need it and they're quite happy. And also, they're quite happy to pay a contribution to the waste services. So it's not going to cover the whole waste services, but it's going to make a contribution to it. Because the alternative is we withdraw it, like some of the other markets, and it might be a deal breaker for some of them. They might say, well, actually, I'm going to go somewhere else. So but I, but they understand that there's a cost to us and so we're providing the service which they have to pay for. So I'm going to bring that back uh in September as well, so.
Well, thanks for that. And I call the meeting closed. Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you. Well done.
The ice cream man is not getting our little bit easy.
Well, potentially.